Follow this meeting to the board. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
We got a couple of things that we're going to do prior to adopting the agenda. This is Rex, if you would please stand and do some introductions here.
My honor, we have a guest tonight along with Gene Civic's family that I want to introduce, Marky from our area for NISPA, he's our NISPA representative, and he has some words for Mr. Civic.
Thank you everybody on here, on behalf of NISPA and Bloom Valley Voces, recognizing the great work that Gene's done for our community and state as a whole. It's truly an honor to be here to represent the NISPA School Board of Voces, celebrating for 21 years, Gene's been a set past president on the Uwego Athletic Board. His commitment is truly remarkable, especially his leadership as board president and vice president for many years. It's over two decades of dedicated service guiding the school district council, chairing the campaigns, and it tied the average length of service for school board member to six years, so you've got a welcome to have him. For Gene's influence exists far beyond the Uwego Athletic Board district lines. He's a familiar and respected face among his peers, evidenced by his two-year term as the past president of the Bloom Valley School Board Association. The leadership role chosen by school board members across the entire Bloom Valley Voces speaks volumes about the trust and respect he deserves in this hall. What truly sets Gene apart as a gentleman to every board meeting is his unparalleled financial expertise. As a lifelong resident of the area and a graduate of the Leonard Howes Business Administration and Accounting, Gene built a formidable career. He boasts of one of the 30 years of school district financial management experience spanning several school districts and two voces. My neighbor know that prior to his retirement in 2014, Gene was the controller of the GST Voces Central Business Office, or Marky's never retired in 2005. Under his visionary leadership, your office would become the largest Voces CEO in New York State, and a model that has now been drawn to the state as well. His responsibilities encompass every facet of financial operations, from payroll and accounts payable, emergency auditing, even tax collection. He also played a role critical in major capital projects, including the staggering $150 million in projects run by the city. Even after his former retirement, Gene dedicated his education to win. He continued to work as a part-time consultant at GST Voces in Almiria, training new school board business officials who served districts across the region. This allowed his continued active affiliation with the New York State School Board Association and, of course, NISPA, allowing him to remain incredibly current with the ever-changing financial regulations and policy. On behalf of New York State School Board Association and the entire state educational community, we extend our deepest gratitude to Gene for his unwavering commitment, his financial stewardship, and his dedicated service to the students and taxpayers of the Uwego Athletic Community and God. Gene, your impact has been magical, and we wish you a retirement full of joy, relaxation, and all the hurt peace. Thank you.
And we do have this live here. You want to stand up?
No, thank you.
Andrea?
Angela.
Angela, sorry.
Andrea.
And your children?
And my children, yes.
Thank you all for being here, and thank you.
We just, yeah, you want to say something, Gene?
I don't know what else to say after all that. You said it better than I could. I will say, where did you talk?
I said Angela.
Okay, anyway, I'm particularly proud of Angela because she started out as the accounts payable clerk in my GST. I also started the CBO in Bloom Voces, which was the first CBO in New York State. It wasn't a button to push, and I decided to go to Almiria and help them start there, but Angela came as a hard-challenged accounts payable clerk and a mom with a few little ones, and asked me what she should do to develop her career, and I told her. She's now the CBO Controller of Bloom Voces. She worked her way up through our organization, and then she became a business official in Vessel, and now she's the CBO Controller of Bloom Voces. So I'm particularly proud of Angela's career, and I've had a few others that have done the same, but she's right here, so she gets the right information along with us.
Well, I'm not really good in math, but I know that you could add up all of our years of experience, and we don't have 21 years of experience. So Gene, thank you very much for serving the community and the Uwego School District, it's greatly appreciated, not only by the people who are here, but many graduates that have left, and we thank all of you, bigger and better things, so we appreciate your service, thank you.
Thank you.
We have a presentation from Future Farmers of America, if you guys don't mind, you want to go first, you don't have to wait, that'd be great.
So each year, we'd like to recognize people in the community for their support and help with our program, and we tried to get Dr. Green to come to our banquet without telling them that we were going to give him an award. We failed in our efforts, but Marcie and the group were nice enough to get us on the board agenda tonight so we could do it tonight. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to these guys and let them present the award.
Yeah, this is our honorary chapter degree ceremony. It is always a pleasure to receive honorary members into the FFA. The purpose of this ceremony is to recognize from time to time the efforts of others made on our behalf. I will read the section of the National Constitution which provides for honorary membership. Honorary membership: Farmers, school superintendents, principals, members of school board, education; chapter advisors, teachers, staff members in agricultural education; business people and others who are helping to advance agricultural education, and the FFA, who have rendered outstanding service, may be elected to honorary membership by majority vote of the members present at any regular meeting or convention.
Dr. Green, we would like to extend our heartfelt appreciation for your continued support and encouragement. We understand that a key to a successful education for students is a supportive administration that encourages real experiences. Your recognition and understanding of the impactful impact agriculture education and FFA student leadership has made a profound difference in the growth and success of our chapter. The administrative and financial support you've provided for our activities have inspired us to strive for excellence and take pride in the work. Thank you for being a strong supporter for our mission and taking an active role in our success.
On behalf of every member, I wish to say we are proud to have you as honorary member. May this affiliation prove valuable to you. I press upon you that we look to your counsel and guidance. It is because of the great respect that we have for you that you have been elected to honorary membership. May we always cooperate for the benefit of all. I now confer upon you honorary membership in the Uwego FFA chapter. It presents you with this token of membership in recognition of the support you have provided our chapter.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Are we good to press on, you guys?
Yes.
Thank you, guys, for having me.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on, item two, need a motion to adopt the agenda.
So move.
Discussion.
Gene?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Carrie?
Approval of minutes from June 23 meeting, need a motion? Discussion.
Gene?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
John?
Item four, personal items for action, need a motion, summon. Second.
Second.
Need a discussion?
Gene? Wait.
Wait, one second.
Oh, sorry.
Were there questions that I was just checking, I hope you ever seen emails at traffic times, or the discussions that were happening, or that we wanted to have on this, that are under move from this side?
That's up to you, if you as well have pulled that item for...
No, we discussed it, we'll talk about it. Okay.
Gene?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Joe? Nora?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Item number five, finance items for action, this is dissent, 5.1.
5.1 through 5.17.
5.1 through 5.17, need a motion?
Aye.
Second?
Second, we're doing these all at once?
Yeah.
I just want to ask a question.
Discussion, yeah, we're doing the discussion.
Move to first and then second.
Second, is there a second?
I'm going to do the second, yeah, I'll do the second.
Nora was the second.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Nora was the first, John was the second, sorry.
Oh.
Like, you're going...
Okay.
Any discussion?
Just a question, I was just wondering, like, on 5.15, when we dispose or recycle the maintenance equipment, what do we do, is there an auction, is there a bidding system?
Yeah, there's usually an auction that gives you...
And where do they advertise?
I believe, I'm not exactly sure, I go on their website, they'll advertise it.
Our ads?
Auction here.
Okay.
Who comes, no, we don't advertise it, no. The IT stuff usually goes through a Voces.
Voces.
A Voces.
Service.
Service that sets out, or if it's big equipment, like, it'll go to Manase, Manasi.
Manasi, Benji, the others.
Yeah, you know, other牌子, like a Trossman, remember?
Yeah.
Right, yes.
Yeah, so we just have to look in different places?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they'll, yeah, they'll promote it, so they'll put the information out there as to what, you know, what items that we're disposing of.
I have a question about 5.7 and 5.10, can you just clarify, is the same language, same document, the difference between the resolution?
So...
It's very complex, and there are two kids.
Thank you.
You're going to have 5.5, or, or a different, I'm not sure. Let's have a bus borrow, I'm sorry, 5.6.
Yep.
Or is it a rand or is it a ban? This is, this is a rand, we're borrowing, we're borrowing all of it at this moment, and then what doesn't get used, the investment accounts to build, generate some funds. Rands typically run like a year. Am I wrong?
It should be a ban. It should be a ban.
It should be a ban, right?
Yeah, it's a ban, and you later convert that to bond once we...
That's why I asked it, I think it's just typo.
It's just that typo in that first slide.
Because a rand is a one year.
If we're not just going to grab a bond.
It's a ban.
I don't think we're going to get $26 million, $28 million in a year and pay it back.
No.
So we just got to type.
Yeah.
We'll just make note of that and...
Yeah, I changed it. Any discussion?
Corrective action, 5.6. So, is there any other, any other means to see this approved or...
Is it submitted?
Yeah.
That's a, or...
Yep, as a, as a, this is a bill, yeah.
Any other discussion?
The only, hey, um, yep, 5.17, I was wondering if, so, just how certain talks of, uh, once the works done, I'm going to put a date on it, just, it's open ending today, as far as how I live in, you know, if there's a, do we revisit it here? Is that how you would run that?
What number are you going to?
Uh, 5.17.
For this contract?
Yeah, that would be, that would be a year to year.
Okay. Do we get?
Do we have, do we have a long range of plan for the transportation, are we going to continue to do this in regards to...
I've just recommended to do it again for this, this year.
Okay.
But then after that, I think they'll...
Okay.
Just to provide a little additional support for the second year of employee tax for, found it very helpful, so.
So if, John, what you're referring to is, if you had this issue before contracts that kind of get into the following year, so...
End date?
At least, you know, alert us at the end of next year, at the last board meeting.
Right.
I don't think there was, you know, a good...
Indication.
It's a dollar amount in a year.
Yeah.
We're not going to go over, but...
Right.
It's an open-ended contract.
Yep, we can add that.
You, tab, need a discussion?
Gene?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Okay, and six, CPSC, CSC 504 recommendations, recommended that the recommendations of the CPSC CSC 504 team are hereby approved, need a motion?
Phone them.
Second.
Seven.
Discussion.
Gene?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
Joe?
Report, briefly, I just want to say a few things about graduation, and, you know, we had discussions in the, for probably six, seven months about the stress that it involved with changing dates sometimes, and I appreciate that, as a community, we came together and worked it out, and I think it was almost perfect. In terms of the time of day, the setting in the evening, temperature, traffic, and such a fantastic group of young people graduated. The next day, downtown, the strawberry festival, I was fortunate enough to hear the band, and maybe another band again perform downtown, I thought that was great, and so I thought it was a good weekend, and I hope everyone felt the same way. And I'm going to end the report there, anticipate another portion of that that come up later in the meeting. Mini reports, mini reports.
My contact with the teacher center director and mentor coordinator, Heather's gone in, but we have a preliminary, we're trying to schedule some dates here in July to go over some of the end-of-the-year evaluations on how the support was for professional development, so. Haven't set any dates yet, I know Christine Bangl and Heather are working on some dates that'll work, so anybody else that's on that committee, it's the teacher center committee, you're welcome to join, or for those that could potentially be next.
If she's here, she can apply, she doesn't... Okay, so we're just going to give you a quick project update, so the contractors are, have been working, for the past couple of weeks, they have been in this back wing behind the pool and working through the entire music hallway, I guess we call it, out behind the auditorium, so that is all part of the, that previous project that got pushed to this summer.
So that has been gutted, they are restructuring things in there, there's a lot of work that's been happening.
The gymnasium is due to start, I believe, right tomorrow at the latest, so they're going to start the demo there, and we'll keep our fingers crossed that we bring it home on time, so it'll be, we already know we're going to have some issues, I think, with just some items on lead times with the gymnasium, and so there'll be some challenges there, I think, in terms of ordering and getting particular items. They've been ordered, it's just the timeline is, is out pretty significantly.
We are, as far as that timeline, do, is there anything else at risk that's put us where we may need to borrow room space, or on those lines, or...
I don't believe so, I don't believe so, I think, I think we'll be okay as far as, I think our biggest issue is probably going to be the, the new basketball hoops, but we should have those, obviously before basketball season, but they might, they might have the longest lead time for what we, what we're looking at. So hopefully, we have a date, or I think right now, Dr. Farrell, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe August 15 is the date that we're shooting for to, to be able to take it back over, so we're hopeful. Just quickly, just want to update the board on French numbers, so we have seen a decline in our French numbers over the past few years. I think three years ago, we had about 25 students that were interested in French in the middle school. That number, the next year dropped to 19, and then this year, we have five students who, who had interest in French, and we've had over the period of time, some of those students that started out in French over into, moved over into Spanish, so we're at a place in numbers right now that running a class of five is, you know, fiscal, fiscally problematic, I think, for, for the district, so that's kind of what the, the numbers are currently. So I guess, you know, for the board and comfort level of, you know, do we offer it, or do we not offer it, and see, see where it goes, I know that, you know, significantly, say, on average, class size is 150, you know, 125 students are taking Spanish, so it's a, there's, there's a much larger number.
Certain opportunity for students who, that are currently interested in French here, going in with other students that are taking French in another district.
Well, we, we'll continue to offer the courses to the students that are currently in it, but it would just be this year's coming in seventh grade class.
Okay.
So a determination of, are we going to just offer Spanish, or are we going to offer French to, to five students, so it's a, you know, certainly a challenge to consider, but we've seen that, that number kind of dwindle over the years.
Are we seeing this across... Are we seeing this across this, across the area with the French numbers going down at seventh grade?
I don't know, I don't know that for sure.
That was my question.
I think some other districts are, have definitely dealt with this, I believe SB had the same situation not long ago. Where those numbers have, have started to trend downward.
I wonder if there'd be any share opportunities for you. I mean, you gotta believe the other, usually these kind of trends are unique to one district, you know?
Yeah.
Um, you know, something where they could have a class remotely, you know, for five students here and you know, seven students in May or Mar or whatever, or something to talk about, you know, your choosing.
Yep. Yes, we'll talk about that. So we're kind of in a holding pattern right now, I mean, those, that is the number. Um, I think us offering a class with five is yet, um, a bit challenging, so I don't, you know.
You gotta decide before.
We'll have to decide before, um, you know, as we get a little bit closer here, because of schedules and whatnot, so.
Be a little rough to set up, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with you physically, it's not a good move.
So I'm not just asking you to make a decision, I just wanted to share that with you right now, so that you are aware of what those numbers were and, you know, I think we have a little bit of time to, to make a final decision.
I was just wondering if those five students that are interested in French still could have an opportunity to possibly take it, but they're working with a collective group of kids around the Brumtagaboses is what I was thinking.
Possibly, we may be able to look at something like that, if they.
I'm hearing a question, I saw it was this.
Yeah. So, next year, well, there were, there were nineteen before, I believe, switched to Spanish, so there'd be like fifteen in French too. We, we, we can look at different options for sure.
I think definitely looking into sharing, like, like Zoom or something like that, did that during COVID, to learn how to do it.
Yep.
Great, okay.
Is it white now while we're offering to move to Spanish now?
Well, yeah, if we, cause we'll have five.
Yeah.
Five students, so yeah, we will only be offering.
For income, yeah, it's unfortunate to take, uh, opportunity away, you know, so if there could be some sort of share.
Yeah.
And again, it is, it's financially responsible, so pay someone just for five, for five students, but if there's a way.
We can look at some different options.
Maybe it works.
For sure. Uh, let's see, so I just, I just wanted to be aware of those, there's a couple of policies that, um, we formed committees for, for this summer, where one is the internet enabled devices policy, so that is, um, is due to the governor's law on cell phones primarily, but it also includes watches and earbuds. Um, so, uh, our high school principal, assistant principal, they're putting a committee together with some staff and some students and parents. And just taking a look from, at NISPA's policy that they've sent us and, and providing any feedback to the board that, uh, maybe for consideration, so. That's happening, um, here in the next month, we also have, um, a policy being updated on the, the heat index. Um, so we have a committee that's working on that, and Francisco's pulling some folks together to, to look at that policy as well. And then the third policy that we need to just finalize, um, we've always had a student, uh, on the board, but now it's technically a requirement to have a student board member, um, so we, we may wanna talk about at some point, look at the, the process that you wanna use for that, or are you comfortable with what we're currently doing now? Um, as the selection, we can look at, we can look at some different things in terms of a vote of some kind. But I certainly will have, uh, Mr. Spoken, Mr. Muckus coordinate that as well. So if you have ideas, let me know, um, shoot me any mail, then one of them take a look at that as well with the group.
For that part, sorry, for that requirement, is there, is there a requirement with student as far as certain grade level or, I'm sort of.
I think it, it really comes down to choice, I think, basically, the, uh, the whole idea, I know, is student participation.
Yeah.
We've, we've kind of done that, but what happens, and some of our students are so busy, cause they're about in so many things, getting to the meetings is, you know, the, the last thing on their, that played at that moment, so.
I would, I would suggest that, uh, working with the career center and make sure that whoever it is has an interest in.
Right.
Political.
Yep.
How, how the science or politics of that.
Right.
That would be helpful.
Uh, just real quickly, staff, last day for staff is the twenty seventh, which is part of eight. Uh, we've got some professional development going on this week, um, Mrs. Castor likes to talk a little bit about that this evening. And we also had a presentation this morning from Assured Partners, um, on preventative health measures, along with, um, an introduction to Marathon Health, so we, we were, it was nice to be able to get, to have that presentation, we're a little bit out the front of that, because I believe come September, they will be back to do a presentation as well, so Christina Braga, who is with Assured Partners, came in and did a presentation, uh, for staff, he got some really good questions and was able to provide some feedback for, for folks, so the ball's rolling on that, uh, and we'll, you know, we'll continue to work with Marathon on, on that roll out.
Okay, was that?
Yep.
That, uh, just said a specific building or was it just the, um, or was it all?
All, yep, yep. Let's see, what else do I have here? Covered that, I just want to graduation, uh, thank all the, the people that are involved in graduation, there's an incredible amount of work that goes into the setup and in the campus, looking at what it does, um, our staff being able to attend and support our students and, you know, it's just, uh, we got lucky, right? It's rained every other day for the last, uh, whoever knows how many months, but, uh, we couldn't have had, it couldn't have been a better evening to, to have graduation, I thought it went really well and um, and as Joseph's agreed, great, uh, class, got a class of twenty five, great group of kids. Uh, we have summer camps, uh, summer enrichment camps, it'll be starting, uh, July seventh, um, so we'll take a little deep breath and then right back at it, we will have hundreds of kids on campus, uh, participating in all sorts of different activities, uh, this summer, so that's, it's exciting. They, they keep the place happening. I think that covers what I need, and I will just turn it over now to Mrs. Castorline, who's gonna talk a little bit about the PLC work we've done this year. And also, at some point, she's gonna talk a little bit about these reading series.
Yes, is that enough or is?
No, you can do that. Again, you can do them both if you want, because that makes district businesses. So yeah, if you wanna do them both, that's fine.
So, um, I heard a comment last time that, oh, Heather, you only talked for five minutes, I'm so impressed. So now I'm challenged on, challenge accepted. And so I, what I said, I'm sorry, I'll make a graphic and then talk. So, um, I just wanted to share with you guys, um, all of the, the, the great work that all the teams have done, um, and it was you, as you, as we move across that, one of the things that steps out is we're still, you know, working towards our mission, which is, um, you know, I brought with me just to hone in on one of the statements was, um, provide all students with an engaging experience that prepares them for their future and ensures that they have the skills necessary to be successful contributing adults, and so when we started looking at that in the fall, you, you, you see the rest of it fall into place on hovering around skills. Um, but what our ultimate goal is, is we, we wanna be able to track students' growth in their skills over time and then have them along the back, uh, process as well, so they can gain their self advocacy and agency, and so that just shows that progression here, so last year, in order to get some of this started, we had to look at our, um, it's called an LMS, but it's a learning management system, and we, we went from Schoology to Canvas, and because we needed something that would forward thinking company that would be, you know, up for the challenge and keep us up to date with being able to do some of the things that we were looking forward to do. Um, and teachers spend, you know, a lot of time getting, you know, transferring and, and, um, their, their mindsets to new learning management systems. And, um, with all of that, we started putting into our Canvas, all of our professional learning community work that we've been doing. And so in the fall, we, um, started, um, a course around OA professional learning community. And so that we're, we have all of our materials in there for teachers to be able to use, and one of the things that came up was revisiting and thinking about our mission and vision. Um, you've heard that in our strategic planning, and, you know, we don't talk about it that much, and it should be what is the foundation and, or keeps us focused and um, on our mission and vision towards, you know, our, getting all of our students, um, those skills. So when we started thinking about all that and diving into that, we noticed that we needed to start focusing on skills. And so, um, we started doing a little research and noticed that all of our state standards were starting to migrate and change to that. And that skills were at the foundation of all of them, so what we were starting to see from our perspective is that content wasn't necessarily driving, it was the skill, and so that was the foundation of all of our math, our science, our ELA, our social studies, it was starting to kind of emerge. And so we, um, reached out to a, um, associate, um, Anthony Rival to come in and work with us, and he really helped solidify the case that for those enduring skill, what are those skills that kids really need to understand and know and be able to, to do, so that when, no matter what pathway they go down, what, what, um, course they decide to take, they'll be able to have the skills to be successful. Um, and so that became our focus in the winter time, and then into the spring, we started to continue to work on that. Um, team, team started identifying, specifically six through twelve, really identifying those skills that could bring those grade levels even vertically together and start, um, what are they unpacking those and what would it look like for our students to show and have those skills? What would be proficient there? Um, and in the middle school, they, they specifically were concentrating on skills because they were looking at their report card and making some changes, so that we could better communicate with families where our students were at with those skills. Um, and then that also led into, we had our Canvas, but we had also had this other, um, uh, platform in there, which is an assessment platform called Mastery Connect. Kind of similar to eDoctrina that somebody may have heard, um, but it's embedded in Canvas, so teachers are in one specific location. And so we had teachers come together, start piloting that and, um, trying to problem solve, troubleshoot some things that might come up for teachers when it's their turn to start diving into that, and we're gonna continue to work on that even into the summer. We have a teacher who is going to be offering CPE for teachers, so they're very good to do that. And that gets us set up for, um, next year, which is really, our, our, the, the focus is to take those skills, put them into Mastery Connect or into, um, our, at the elementary level, into our, they, they have a dashboard where they're collecting that information, and really start to track students' growth, but also we need to start having our students track their growth. Sort of, you know, we've heard of student self assessment, but it's really them keeping track of what they're doing. If they're not growing in something, giving them the feedback and tools to be able to go back, try again, and then grow. Um, and then proficiency skills, that really is the tool that teachers can use to communicate with families and students. Um, this is, this is where we want you to get to, and this is where you are now, and these are the things you need to do to get there. Um, and we believe that all of that working together will be able to help our students with their agency, their self agency and agency, so that they, no matter what pathway they go down, they'll feel confident that they'll be able to get there for graduation. So that was sort of just, I mean, that was a ton of work in here, this, this school year, I'm proud of all the teachers for going ahead and doing that, but I just wanted to share with you all of that. Um, at the elementary, today, they, um, we were able to give them some instructional data from the current state test, where they were able to use that to kind of reevaluate their essentials. So that they could, um, you know, see how their students respond to all the question, you know, the, the state tests this year, so we were able to look at that, and that kind of, um, drove their essential work and also to help make sure that we stay focused and grounded when we, um, share with you tonight, the reading program that I want to share.
So just to kind of dovetail off of that, since she's talked a lot about the PLC work, so Stacy and, and Heather applied for a dissolution tree for promising practices, uh, building, and we just got a notification today that they received it, so congratulations to OWEES. Doing, uh, great work around their professional work areas. So I'm very thankful to Heather for, you know, for.
I'd like to invite Brittany, Mandy, and Therese up to share and to, um, share with you our full process and where we are today, and share some samples with you.
I am glad.
We've read your book.
Yes.
Is it nostalgia?
Sorry? So we wanted to present to more today, um, uh, we did submit some reviews of three other programs, but kind of share with you how we've been working for, uh, since, um, March, last March, working on ELA, and, um, just to sort of wanna share with you the timeline of all the work that we've done to get to where we are to present to you. Um, last year, we started looking at ELA curriculum and really just establish a committee of teachers to get together and start to, you know, really look at what, what, you know, our, our curriculum positives and negatives, where, where are areas that we need growth? Where do we need to, um, you know, what's going well? And we did that, and then, um, as we were moving through there, New York State put out guidance that, um, districts would need to be aligned to the science of reading, and so in January, they sent, um, they released some guidance that, um, showed the six pillars of science of reading, and districts had to show their alignment and, um, of their current curriculum to that. And, um, with that, before we got to the January, we kind of knew it was coming, so we had a committee meet again and start looking at what we're currently doing, how aligned are we? And once that release, uh, information came out, we really were able to see that, um, we had some, some gaps. And so then that set us on a trajectory to look at multiple programs, we, um, had representation of every grade level. Um, and we got together for large amounts of time to really dive into this, and we looked at all materials, we went and visited, we piloted, we, we did a, a, a lot of work to then get to where we are, we're in April, which was piloting the one that the team thought was the best representation of practices that they leave in, along with areas that, um, we needed that growth in, in, um, and, um, would, they could see best fitting it, and we got there. And so they piloted that for, um, for the.
Seven month.
Yeah, it was seven month, it was, it's a very challenging time of year, and I appreciate all teachers at the end of the school year diving in and, 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 and doing that. And then that led the team to June twenty fifth, to unanimously come together around the reading program that they, um, that they're finishing up. So Mandy and Brittany and Therese, so let them speak, cause they're the experts on that. So Heather spoke, the team consisted of kindergarten through sixth grade teachers, um, and we would break up and dig a little deeper on some programs that seemed to be front runners, um, and just came out as having what we, what we needed, um, to support our students, so. The top three, um, programs that we decided we really wanted to dig deep in, um, and request maybe some samples, uh, to take a look at what, what they consisted of. Were HMH into reading, you'll see HMH listed again, it stands for Hilton Mifflin Hardcore. Um, Wit and Wisdom was the other program that we took a look at, and CKLA. And when we looked at these, um, either online or some that we had samples from, we did use the same evaluation tools to see kind of how they stood up, um, next to each other, we used the New York State Curriculum Review Guide and the Reading and Reading Curriculum Evaluation Guidelines also to help us see how they looked from comparing them equally to each other.
So, uh, the first curriculum we really dove into was CKLA, we ordered samples, we had samples for K six that we were looking at, um, they sent us a good sampling, and there were some strengths to this program, they had a really good. They had a really good content in all of their textbooks. There was lots of science and social studies woven into the reading. It was a very large, difficult program. We did a visit to a school that was teaching it. One issue was there was no phonological awareness component. This is like a precursor to reading. It's kind of the ability to manipulate sounds and words like rhyming and syllables. And that was not present at all, we would have needed an additional program to teach with it. It had weak phonics, weak fluency, the oral language was not strong. You can see there were several just weaknesses. And that, I think, if you go to curriculum review, it delineates that a little more, you can go and master it. We also looked at Witten Wisdom. We got some samples from them, I think, a couple primary, a couple intermediate. This program, the company was a little hard to get some samples from and deal with. The strengths of this were the texts were very engaging. In the intermediate, they had some great textbooks like Hatchet, great books. They had an adequate vocab instruction, which we really need, some vocabulary strengths. Lots of diagnostic evaluations. But primarily, those diagnostic evaluations were one-on-one style evaluations, which were very time-consuming and maybe not just as time-effective as we would like. There was again, no phonics or phonological awareness components, which means we would have to supplement in the primary. And the writing was heavily based on what they read. There was no writing in genre, which is a requirement by the New York State students. So it would have required some sort of.
So this, the next two slides are focused on the program that the group unanimously approved. And the six pillars are really what we were looking for in our program. But they were strong in every area. And the HMH covers every single pillar and covers it thoroughly. One of the things we've been lacking has been a strong vocabulary program because right after students become foundationally strong in decoding, vocabulary is the next greatest indicator of reading success. So we all loved the vocabulary program K6 that HMH had to offer. But it also doesn't necessarily require additional supplementation in the foundational skills of any of the ones in phonics. It's also a K6 program. It's not just K5, which some programs are, this will move into middle school with our kids. And it met all of our We Go Up Lake and Essential standards as well. Go ahead and click for the next one. These were some of the strengths that we felt put this program on the top. The specific tier two and tier three vocabulary instruction. One of the things that we can guarantee our kids is that they're going to have good, strong tier two and tier three. That's your words that cover all areas, like maybe the word evaluate, construct. Those are like tier two words. But it also has a strong science and social studies component built into the reading, which we really need to provide for our kids. So they're getting words like photosynthesis, words that fill their content areas and just make them more knowledgeable world citizens. The reading and writing components are aligned and there's quite a strong spiral. So if a student isn't ready to take on that skill, let's say in March, it will repeat in April and May and June. So essential skills like main idea, identifying important details, the children will have multiple times to see that skill and practice that skill. The whole program builds from year to year to year. So from third to fourth to fifth, they're getting a lot of similar language and they're going to have a lot of cohesive language throughout. It's very explicit, so there's no hit or miss. If we are faithful to what is in there, our students are going to be guaranteed to get what they need to become successful readers. I do have a little sample of a fifth grade book that I thought, you know, you might just be curious. We're talking about it, but you're not seeing it. If you look at the blue tab, you can see one of the, if you guys don't mind sharing. Jess, you get to have one of them yourself. If you look at the blue tab, we piloted one module. And this module, you kind of flip through ten, eleven pages or so, you can see that the reading passages are very engaging. The fifth graders in my class were so immersed in this text and learning about the atmosphere and how explorers have in historical times reached higher levels of the atmosphere and then how they submerged themselves below water. They asked so many great questions. Writing in response to reading is built in. HMH has also been acquired by NWEA. NWEA also designs the New York State exams. So we are hand-to-hand working with a company that also bootlights that New York State test. The other component that is a strong characteristic of this company is they offer a program called Coachly. Do you want to talk about that, Heather?
So Coachly is there, so what they offer is every teacher with this implementation has their own coach. So they have their own person that they can communicate with, reach out to, have questions about lesson, you know, design what to do. I wasn't here yesterday in class, I'm trying to figure out what to do with my students. And they'll have this person that, a person that they can lean on to, to stay intact and stay on track with the rest of their team if something happens. Or how to help this student who was out for a few days, what should I do? And then they'll be able to talk with them whenever through chat, but also they'll be able to arrange meetings with them. And it's commonly suggested that they meet at least twice a month, you know, just on a Zoom for half an hour. So that's a huge, huge part of being able to implement a program when you know that you'll have that much support individually for a teacher, then they'll be able to work as a team. They have members, every, every grade though has a members who piloted. So they've already had an opportunity to kind of dive in, so now we have them there to help support. And then we'll have our, you know, the professional learning in general that goes with it. We felt like this really helps teachers with that transition, with that change.
Brittany and Mandy also brought a couple of little samples just so you can actually tangibly, visibly see what kinds of pieces this comes with.
We spoke about the strength of the vocabulary. The modules all come with vocabulary cards to, and this is from second grade. So citizen, difference, tryouts, scribble. And it gives practice and it's repeated through the week practicing these vocabulary words. And the vocabulary words come from the stories. So they're seeing it in their stories and having discussions. It gets you, you explain it, you talk about examples, they might use it as a sentence. Some of them, they give you a suggestion to act it out, which the students really enjoy doing that.
Kids really enjoy those vocabulary.
Great to see those words, Beth.
Second grade. Yeah, the kids are, so I got a chance to talk to an ARAM teacher who was piloting and their unit, their module was a science one, so. And then it was around plants. And so they were introducing, she was just, so she was a fifth grade teacher and then she would pay. So she had the knowledge of fifth grade, you know, what they were needing to do. So she was teaching her students main idea and theme, but then also with the science. They were so engaged that even on, they took that information and applied it to the playground. They went over and they would pick up flowers, look, we're harvesting. And so they were using the words that they were learning in their vocabulary, applying it in their reading and then going out into and being that excited to be able to. She was just very excited about that level of engagement and application.
The texts are very engaging. They are also strong in social studies and science content. And the two grade levels that I worked in, both of the science units fit in with what our science standards are. They say they're not fully aligned with the New York State's science and social studies, but they do fit. Engaging with fun vocabulary words. The kindergarten room I was in, they were, the one day they were doing non-living and living and she would have them act it out. She'd be like, non-living! And the kids would kind of freeze and act it out. They really had it down, my idea was really good, but it was, it was fun, the kids loved it all.
Does it, does this program, like the teacher's guide, tell you or does it give suggestions to how long to spend? I mean, is it a guided module program or is it, is it a sliding scale or does it depend on your class?
It is very flexible. They have three layouts time-wise, a ninety-minute suggested layout to fit in the reading, writing, and phonics. That is very, that's very crunched. There's a one-twenty and then a one-fifty. So they have, they have layout suggestions for all those depending on what kind of time you have.
And the modules, every module is three weeks long. I know, I think our tenth, twelfth modules, I think ours had, oh, my secondary tenth, twelfth modules. And each module is three weeks long and they have day one, day two, day three. Every, it has five lessons, so fifteen lessons would be the module. Other than the, the Coachly, Coachella?
Yes.
Yeah, Coachly, I want to say Coachella, but it's not. Other than that, is there an implementation plan, a long-term implementation plan? Or is it just dive in and use the systems or is it just a spiral? Well, we'll definitely have, have coaches in both buildings to, one, any of the other, going to also be there to support. But we're going to take the lead of the company and utilize their professional learning that they, on top of the Coachly. There's also that implementation. And so we will be, at least for three years, taking their lead and making sure they're implementing. Because the first year is going to be, you know what it is, and then we get a little bit better, you know, get a little sharper and then lean on that. So I don't see anything, you know, like from that far out for three years, that's what I wouldn't, going to lean on them to provide that. And we already have them lined up for our superintendent, they're in October. Before we started our pilot, we had a required two-hour training over Zoom with a Coachly coach. And we also, Millie and I did some work with the grade levels that were piloting to dig in. Because there are a lot of online resources, so that's a situation in itself. So we, once you get familiar with it though, it is very easy to navigate, so.
And the Coachly system was very easy also. You could, you could just get on the website and chat with your coach.
And ask him a question.
Instant feedback, have a little conversation, and then schedule a meeting for the next day or several days out. It was very convenient.
And one of the nice other things that teachers had mentioned was that the format for doing, delivering the lessons in K is the same form, format first and second. So no matter what grade level you may move to, the system will be there, the outline, I guess, will be there, everything. But the information then will be a little bit different. That was nice that it wouldn't be like a whole new thing.
Right, it's the same structure.
Yeah, same structure.
So do all the ELA coaches get this, to our building, not the Coachly, but to our buildings additional training? Like the training that you guys all received?
Yeah, we, we're going to take advantage of all the things that we can, we can get.
How are we assessing, is it just an annual assessment or are there benchmark assessments? I could see a number of that assessment.
There's, there are plenty of assessments. So there are, there are, there's many different assessments. Every week, there's a weekly assessment that has a passage and multiple choice and a short response question that's related to the genre that they're studying. So each module would have three, you could take one at the end of each week. There is an end of module which has multiple stories. And all of these assessments really kind of mirror and are very similar to the New York State ELA, which, which is nice because it's constant practice throughout the year. So you have a better idea of what your students are, where their strengths are, and where you need to meet their needs.
So you know, the program also offers a lot of other books. This is really more designed, the book that you're seeing right here is designed for the whole class to kind of do a close read-up. But there's a lot of small group work too. So if you're noticing a collection of kids that need a particular intervention or a little more skill work, there are also a lot of other books that are designed to support small group work where you're kind of ongoing in an observational way. It might not be like a multiple choice exam, but it's a way for you to kind of look and see what students are doing and how they're responding to text. So there's also kind of that observational piece on a daily basis too.
You mentioned three years. So was this, so we purchased it for three years and then do we have to review this again or what, how does this work with the?
Reviewing it, I mean, I, I guess that would be completely, if it's not working well, then obviously.
I understand it, you mentioned three years, so I wasn't sure.
Well, I'm just saying like typically, I think it takes at least three years for it to become confident in what they're doing. We sit out for like content area and sciences, three years really does help. You need that learning curve.
Yeah.
And so that's why I put that as a benchmark. But obviously, we're going to be checking in with people and seeing how it's working. And we'll lean on that data, but also one of the other pieces is that we do have our screener and our screener data will also be embedded into the platform that they were speaking of. So now we'll be able to use that screener data to kind of drive some of the decisions that maybe are maybe challenging for us in the sensitivity over here. It's going to be embedded in there for, for teachers to be able to use in groups of students based on some of what they're seeing there. So that was another added bonus.
Our screener is NWEA and it speaks with, and all that data is kind of housed together. There are ways to group kids based on the screener and the HMH assessments that we take. And it offers some instructional ideas for maybe some small groups that need evolutionary support.
And the weekly, the weekly assessments that I was speaking of, you can take it on paper or you can take it digitally and it immediately will score the piece, even the written response. It uses AI to score that. And that will create groups based on need for your students, based on the skill that they're basically needing.
Do you have any concrete outcomes or goals for the New York State assessment? Do you have a, do you set a goal for some kind of result from this?
Well, one of the things that kind of spoke, I spoke of today and we did earlier is we really felt like it was important for all the teacher teams to really make sure that they understand, like they have their essential, your state standard essential list. And then no matter what happens with our program, that we, we know and make sure that we are hitting those particular essentials.
I can give you a little anecdote. Today, we met in teams and we looked at our state test results. And one area that has been hit hard three years in itself is vocabulary acquisition and the ability to define and understand a complex vocabulary term and context. And we did not scroll up. And I think in reflection, part of that is not having that pillar firmly in place. And this program will be challenging because it has every pillar demanded of the teacher and the students. So it's going to take time to put all those pieces into place. But I can see our state test data and I can see where we need to work. But I can see our state test data, and I can see where we need to work. But I'm also really hopeful because I was able to, through this pilot, I was able to do things knowing that it's systematically built. So like when I taught vocabulary, that vocabulary had been spiraled throughout fifth grade. And by the time I was teaching it, they were doing analogies using vocabulary, which was almost a precursor to when I took my F A Ts. And I had to answer analogy after analogy, and they were doing that as fifth graders. So I could see our data today. I could see where we need to work. And I'm really excited to be able to give kids challenging tasks and all the skills underneath it that will help them be successful. So I think we should outline, based on our data for the past three years, what are our main goals? And then let this do its work.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, going back two years, I think the impetus for a program like this was to address, which we all do as educators, find where our weaknesses are, support that, try to improve. And um, so I think that's great. I think a concrete goal would be helpful as a, you know, student education. And a concrete goal is, I shoot for a great. And I remember when we were in, um, I think it was, uh, we were at elementary school, and we were going around. And there, they just seemed like they were, uh, there was some stuff going on in there that was eye-opening for us, for me, I should say. In a way that was similar to, you know, higher level vocabulary words, math in different areas. So I, I think it's, it seemed like it's exciting to see. But I hope that, that kind of goal we set for the teachers of the campus.
You know, I, we're, anyway, great, I think it's all great work by us, and we put the cost of distance in budget. So I want to thank the, the ELA curriculum team, and obviously our, our principals as well who are, are here tonight. Heather, for, there's a lot of work that's been going on for several months, and you know, we really got into this. And uh, they've done their homework, and you know, I feel extremely confident in their selection. And that, that, you know, we're going to see some, some good things come from this. So great job to them. We appreciate the time that you took to do this. I just want to end and wrap up my superintendent highlights. I want to thank Mr. Civic for all of his years of service in the school district. He, uh, he's been on the board since I came here nine years ago. Always, uh, always willing to provide advice, be that ear to, to bounce things off. And you know, I, I, I'm greatly appreciative of, uh, of all the support that he's given me over the years. And um, kind of raised me, I guess, as a superintendent, I would say. You know, and wasn't afraid to tell me what I didn't want to hear, so, and I always appreciated that.
It's like I said, you're kind of surprised me when you asked me to say something. It's hard to encapsulate twenty-one years in a couple minutes. I know we have a lot of folks here, but um, I am still proud of Angela. But I am also very proud of not only you, but all of our administrators that I've worked with over the years. And just watching our teachers tonight, it's a constant reminder to me of how great our teachers are. I'm proud of all of you. And Tricia, you said something about, you know, the S A Ts, the stuff you did for your S A Ts. I'm always amazed when I see little guys doing things in some cases that I didn't do until I got to college. You know, some of the robots you guys build now and the programming you do, I did that in college. So I'm always amazed, but you guys have quite an exciting future ahead of you. Thank you again, Peter, for, for all of the kind words. I, I've met a lot of school boards over the years, and I've always been proud of those here in the U K. So you guys have an exciting future to look forward to. And I, Linda's got my phone number, so, but I don't know. I've been doing this since, uh, all right, kids, since nineteen seventy-six. You're the man. Old, and a little tired. But uh, it's been, it's been a pleasure. It's been a, it's been a real uh, joy for me to show up. Because the reason that we're all here, is sitting in those seats. I've always looked at it that way, and I will always look at it that way. Kids are what we're, kids are what we're all about. And so now it's near us, but thank you, great. Thank you to all of you.
Jean, when you said you offered your number, I looked over to see maybe she was going to change your phone number after you left, just to make sure. Okay. Okay, all right, all right.
Linda's got it.
Enjoy your time. This is ten point one, recommendation for textbooks. Need a motion?
Second.
Uh, discussion.
Jean.
Hi.
Linda.
Hi.
Jessica.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Nora.
Hi.
John.
Public comment. Uh, just to go over the uh, expectation of the public comment. Again, you'll have two minutes on public comment. And if uh, you guys don't mind, I'm going to call these in particular order, not in a direct order. Because I think they can be kind of paired together. Pete, if I butcher your last name, I apologize. Pete, your belly?
No, I, I already said my name.
All right, you already said, you have nothing more to say? Angelo Rogers?
Thank you, Jean, for all you done.
I'm here as mom tonight, and I just want to, you know, show my appreciation for Jean. Um, he's been a lot of years into the district and schools. My four kids come to U K, and I know that it would not be the district. It isn't, or it is, it was a problem. So thank you to Dr. Green, thank you to Jean, of course, and thank you to all of you. So, yeah, that's it. Are you excited for the new reading?
Heather Wood?
Hi, my name is Heather Wood, and this is my daughter. She's fourteen. And I'm here to address the lord of a boy in the girls' locker room restroom. I got a call from Savannah last week that uh, there was a boy in the girls' locker room using the restroom. And she was panicked, so I immediately called the school. The school told me that it's a New York State law and that he is allowed to be in any restroom that he chooses. Um, I asked if there was gender-neutral bathrooms. She said yes, but they can't force him to use it because of this law. Um, and then also, I was informed that if my daughter or anybody else had an issue with this, that um, she should seek counseling and come into the office. So I'm wondering why it's her problem and all the other girls' problem to be afraid of something that's normal? And how is these kids supposed to know how he identifies himself? And what is the validation and proof by the school that he actually has a legal right to be in the locker room with the girls? Um, and not just creeping in on teenage girls being a teenage boy? Um, and when's the school's responsibility to protect my daughter and the majority and not cater to the rights of the small majority?
I want to be, I want to be the next person to speak, and I have a couple things to say, but I want you to think I'm just saying.
No.
Mike Barrow?
Yeah, a couple things. First of all, thank you, Jean, for all your service. I know it's a very thankless job. Second, as a dad of another eighth grade, ninth grade daughter, she was very upset with the situation that happened. And I pick them up every day, and I'll tell you that neither of my children, one in middle school and high school, well, in high school, I guess, will not use a bathroom outdoor buildings because they're not safe. Either one wants to change for Jim for the same reason, so. And that's on the administration of the buildings. I'll switch hats. As the village mayor, please do not ever do graduation on Strawberry Fest weekend. If that may have seemed great to you, it was a nightmare for us with traffic. And uh, it took away a hundred and fifty to two hundred local families. They could have been done, enjoying the festival. They had to make a choice. So just, just like, don't do that.
So uh, I'll talk to you about the strawberry fest. I think we have opinions as well about that. So I did hear about uh, this incident, and um, just so you know, but I immediately called our attorney uh, just to question the law. I think we, we knew the law, but I wanted to make sure I, I had a very good understanding of it. Just, you know, our, as a board, our responsibility is to act as a single unit. And we oversee Dr. Green in terms of running the school district and following the laws. So we are obligated to follow the laws from here. So that does not mean personally that I agree with all the laws. But it means as I sit here as a member of this board, that one of the responsibilities is to enforce and follow the courage of Dr. Green following law. So when I ask, you know, can I speak my opinion? It can't be misconstrued what my opinion is compared to what the laws of this program. And that was a thing that our attorney cautioned me of. However, he did respond with the law, and I do want to read it, just so everyone is kind of aware of what we're dealing with here. So it shall be unlawful discriminatory practice for an educational institution to deny the use of its facilities to any person otherwise qualified or to permit the harassment of any student or applicant by reason of race, color, religion, disability, national origin, citizenship or immigration status, sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, military status, sex, age, marital status, or status of a victim of domestic violence, except that any such institution which establishes or maintains a policy of educating persons of one sex exclusively may admit students of only one sex. So we can offer other areas, locations to change. We cannot mandate, we cannot direct, we can't. So additionally, under educational law, the DAS law, gender identity or expression, and that's the definition of gender, also means that there, this was kind of not how things were supposed to go in terms of this particular situation. Uh, there are some protocols that weren't followed. I think there were some things that were not typically, um, there's some protocols that are in place that were not followed. I guess that's the best way to say it. However, in terms of not allowing people to use the facility or directing divisions to use a particular facility, we're, 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 yeah. So um, there's a couple things that I, I thought of as a parent. I separately just, and I think very important to note that I had a conversation with Dr. Green that requiring students to change for phys ed, which is something that is kind of done at this point, should be looked at. So policies, we can have discussions about, we can set forth some policies, we do these policies. Part of our responsibility. I think that's something that should be looked into. And uh, so there was also, I want to, I want to give some hope for those who have an issue with this law. Is that if you had recalled, maybe you saw that, was it two years ago perhaps? We had a textbook or a book that was in the library that some parents brought to us our attention that they thought was appropriate. That was heard, that went to committee. I think everyone who was on the board at that time expressed their opinions about this book one way or the other. It went to the committee, and although the committee internally in the school district approved and voted to keep the book, there were some significant steps that were put in place administratively that um, restricted the access to the book. And I think that that, even though it doesn't satisfy everybody's concern or everybody's desire, I think that was a good kind of medium in between to address the issue that was brought to our attention and to kind of put some restrictions in place so we can access it. The reason I felt compelled to share that with you is that this is state law, right? That doesn't mean that there are other things that can be put in place to mitigate those situations that happen, okay? And uh, just to show you that we will discuss those things in a second.
What is the purpose of an all-gender restroom? And if they choose to just go into the opposite sex bathroom and not use the gender law?
I'm not sure what she implies.
She's just saying it looks a point of having.
Oh.
Oh, gender neutral, sorry.
Are you talking, okay, so you talked about the gender neutral?
Bathroom, yeah. But why, why do we have them if they can do what they can?
I think that goes back to, this topic was originally raised, is that that was the initial response to this desire. That there was a, the school district had to provide gender-neutral facilities, and then it kind of evolved. But I don't, I don't have an answer to that question. I had a very severe concern. Uh, there's some other people that were around here that maybe had question marks, that maybe they would want to speak, you know, us?
Well, to go back to what was on the agenda, I know you're talking about the science of reading program. Can you explain or um, give us any information on how that is going to be aligned with the cultural response of teaching framework now? What does that mean, and out of what, what's that include? How are they going to include that in the different um, subjects?
I did have a discussion with, with the team, and then they'll provide you some feedback.
So it is aligned?
Yeah, if you want to leave your number tonight.
It's not aligned, the science of reading um, is aligned with cultural response framework now? Could you, you might explain a little bit what that means?
Well, I think in order for us to give you a more coherent answer, we need to look at this program. We need to do some details about how the virtual responsiveness is woven into this program. And we'll need a little time to do that, but one of us can reach out to you too and give you a more thorough response.
Okay, twelve point one, twelve point two, uh, twelve point one. Next meeting July fourteenth. Tricia Hyten, she's our new board member who will be replacing Jean. So hopefully I'll welcome her, and uh, looking forward to uh, a business person getting replaced by a business person. Very grateful for this opportunity to do this service. Any discussion items? Uh, so we need a motion to, into executive session. Motion? Second? Second? Second?